I'd like to bring to order the Charter Township of Oxford Regular Planning Commission Meeting dated October 13th, 2022. And if we could all rise and pay our respects to the flag, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I thank you for that.
Susan, if you had noted the role tonight?
No, Dan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bailey is excused.
He's excused. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have noting in the row. We need a motion for approval of the agenda for this evening.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda dated October 13th, 2022.
I'll support.
A motion made by Mr. Nold and supported by Mr. Spiz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Anybody nay? None. Seeing none, approved. Approval of the minutes from the Regular Planning Commission Meeting dated 9/22/22. Yeah, 22/22.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the Planning Commission Regular Meeting dated 9/22/22.
I'll support.
Well, we again have Mr. Nold that made a motion for the approval of the past minutes from 9/22/22. And Mr. Spiz supported it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone here from the public that wants to talk or speak in regards to issues that are not on this evening's meeting? Seeing none, we're going to move forward. Commissioners, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time? Anyone?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Spiz. I'm sorry, Mr. Nold, I didn't see you. Mr. Spiz first.
Mr. Nold can go first if you'd like.
Oh, thank you.
Oh.
We have been working, at least I have been working diligently on improving and reducing the content of our motions, but yet covering the same topic. So tonight, we've put together with the help of Susan, motions tonight that are reduced in length and will cover our bases. I know everybody's cheering to that. The intent of this is to have other people read the motions as we go along through other meetings, so you may be asked to...
You've been doing such a great job.
Well, we're thinking you might want to step in.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Nold. Mr. Spiz?
Yeah, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Chief Schultz for his years. As many may have known, he's announced his retirement at the end of this year. I'd like to thank him for his great years of service and wish him the best in retirement. Thank you, Jim.
Oh, yeah. I give him a clap. I definitely thank you for that comment, too. Is there anyone else from the PC that would like to make any comments this evening? Seeing none, I have none right now. We'll go into a public hearing, which we have done this evening. Unfinished business, we are at zero with that. We have new business tonight, and the first thing is PC 22008 with frequency wellness. Who's representing them? Mr. Butler?
Members of the Planning Commission. Jim Butler with PEA Group. We have civil engineers for the project. Address is 1849 Pond Run, Auburn Hills, Michigan, 48326. If you recall, we were in front of you in August, August 25th, for special land use approval. After that, we went back to the drawing board a little bit and added parking along the one side of the drive aisle over here, before we had shown that as land banked. Essentially, it's the same plan that you saw for the special land use. Sites 1.95 acres in size. It is a mixed zoning of C1 and C2 with the MDP overlay on top of it. We are showing 60 parking spaces, which exceeds the ordinance requirements by 18. The plan meets all the dimensional requirements for setbacks, for green belt, for landscaping. We are proposing a six-foot-high screen wall along the west-east side of the building to screen the residentially-zoned part of the property. And in Mr. Sharp's letter, he made a comment related to the ADA parking spaces, and he is 100% correct. So, we went back and looked at it a little bit.
We have it on tape.
We have it on tape, yeah. We have to mark that in the calendar because you said he's correct.
Yeah. I 100% agree with him. So, I want to share something with you. A modification. And I'll put it up on the screen as well. So, in the plan that was in your packet, it had two handicap parking spaces. We're required to have three, given the volume of spaces we have. So, what we did is we shifted the parking lot far enough to the south and still meet the zoning setback requirement for green belt. And we were able to add additional parking space.
Additional space.
And the loading for handicap will occur in the laneage, in the stripage. It won't be out in the lane. They can pull forward, go onto the sidewalk, and then enter into the building. So, they don't have to do any maneuvering out on the drive aisle. So, that modification, I think, was satisfactory.
Oh, I see. You're saying you exit off to the east side there for the one space, and then the other one is between the two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, right now, the way the plan was previously, they would have had to get out of the space, go into the drive aisle, and then go up the walkway. We just pulled everything to the south so they can pull forward, go to the north, hit the sidewalk, which will be depressed.
I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a nice improvement. One for each, 25. I guess I get it now.
Yeah.
He is correct.
He is correct.
You had to say it twice, so...
I'm not going to say it the third.
Okay. Thank you for your revision. I understand.
We've read all the review letters, and we can certainly meet those requirements. And we're here requesting preliminary and final site plan approval. You have any questions with me? I'm sure I can answer that. The architect is here, and the developer and contractor. So, we have our team. Thank you.
All right. I think before we go into any... Let's do this, because Zach Michelle is not here this evening. Let's...
Did you steal the screen back?
I'm going to just... Yeah, I might have to steal the screen back for a second. I'm trying to find out where he's at on this thing. Okay, he's on page 30. Let me get to him. Right here, I'll go here. So, in his letter, I'm going to blow this up a little. It's pretty small right now. Oh, just hit the plus here, okay. Where'd it go? Did I lose it?
That side.
Oh, it's way off to the side somewhere. Great. Okay, he's got a letter dated September 30th. And as I went down through his letter with the narrative and everything that he has in it and site description, when you get down in a couple areas here, when he talks about being in the C1 and C2 district, everything that was required within those C1s and C2s for the marijuana provisioning situation is all approved. I mean, they're all acceptable. When you look at complies to, the size, the footage, the percentage, everything is yes, 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 and all complied elements. So, when we go down to his... I'm trying to get to the summary, just so we know for the record. I mean, he does everything through here with landscaping, utilities, and all of such. Lighting, signage, although signage has to probably still be approved yet through, you know, the Planning and Zoning Administrator. Where... Oh, like Site Plan Review Criteria, it's all been met. I'm trying to get to his... Oh, summary, okay. "The preliminary and final site plan application appears to be generally complete, except as otherwise noted in this report. The Planning Commission could grant approval, whether or without conditions, if it determines decision criteria for preliminary and final site plans are met or would be met with conditions. The Planning Commission could postpone action." I don't want to go much further with that because probably one way or the other, we're going to do something different tonight. "If this is the case, it should direct the applicant to prepare revisions based on its review and provide guidance as to what additional information or changes would be necessary." Mr. Butler just made a statement earlier that he said he's read the letters from the consultants, and he feels like everything that they've talked about could be met in one way or another to make this happen. So, when we go look at the Planning Commission's decisions and terminations and finding of facts, he has a potential condition list. But I think Mr. Butler agreed they don't have any difficulty with meeting those comments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I want to conclude that this report was done and written by Carlisle-Wartman Group through Zach Michelle's, and we've read into the record that we have read his summary in light of him not being here tonight. Is there any other questions that you people on the PC have in regards to his summary? Okay, now, I think what we could do is, Mr. Sharp, well, we could take yours, and then we'll have, if we have questions from the PC members, we'll have Mr. Schultz speak quickly, too. But you're just on the other side of them with your plan review. So, let's do you, and then we'll go from there. And I'll follow down with you if you want me to.
Yeah, just being able to scroll down through some of that, so...
Get into the plan?
Yeah, we have our letter here dated the 3rd, and I'll just hit some of the highlights.
Okay.
Again, a lot of our comments are not just site plan, but for future engineering. As Mr. Butler indicated, they'll be able to address these items, which we believe that they can. A lot of them are just little cleanup items that need to be handled. And if they resubmit a final site plan, you know, it can be done administratively through myself and through Zach here in the office. Just some typographical things that are happening. The plans do indicate that PEA previously prepared a geotechnical report, and we did not receive a copy of that report. They're providing underground, you know, infiltration, trenching, and so forth, leaching basins, and so forth. So, we'll just... That'll be kind of important, just for the storm drainage aspects of it. With regards to the site grading, they did prepare a preliminary plan. It's almost like a final plan, to be honest with you. So, we're comfortable with that. Sanitary sewer, they're showing a lead going off to the north. And we have connecting into an existing sewer on Helen Street. That sewer has capacity, so we find that acceptable. They have the monitoring manhole, as all commercial developments need to do. There's a 12-inch...
Oh, great.
They're proposing a 12-inch water line in front of their property along M24, which is a requirement. And they're boring underneath M24 to get to that water. The only comment that we had on that is they showed it as a cut-in T. However, the valve spacing on there does not allow for that to happen, so it will have to be a tapping sleeve, which basically means they won't shut off the water. Otherwise, McLaren, I believe Culver's, you know, that whole corridor right there would be without water, at least from the records that we have. So, again, though, I think Mr. Butler can certainly address that. And the water system has capacity to service this development. With regards to the storm sewer, briefly, you know, I hit on that already. They're showing some underground detention and leaching basin structures. We'll just need the geotechnical report to verify that it's going to meet all of the requirements per the township. With regards to pavements, sidewalks, and curbing, again, we were... I think you're proposing a little bit, or I think Mr. Butler is proposing a slightly different pavement section. And again, we can work with them on that, depending on the geotechnical report that comes through. They are looking at asphalt parking lots, concrete curb, and we just need to see some reverse curbing where that's going to go. But that's more, again, engineering-type-related items. Access to the street, they're taking out one of the approaches. Anything in the MDOT right-of-way is going to need permits from MDOT. Anything in the Helen Street Road right-of-way would need permits from Oakland County Road Commission. He addressed the spacing requirement, the ADA spaces, with the need for one additional one. And they do have a... There's an existing five-foot sidewalk along M24, which, in my opinion, would suffice for our normal safety path there. So, there was... They did submit some documents with regards to their lot split slash combination, whatever you want to call it. Again, typographical errors and things that they'll need to clean up as they go through that to merge those properties together. I think they'll all be merged, right? And three going to one?
Yep.
Is that what it is?
Three going to one.
Three going to one, okay. But overall, I mean, the plan is fine, and we know that Mr. Butler and his team will be able to address the engineering items. It's just some cleanup stuff that I think that they should resubmit a plan, at least for the administrative review for me and Zach, the planner, or sorry, the attorney and the chief. Can't forget them either. So, just to make sure that all of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. All right?
Thank you, Jim.
Questions? Thanks.
Mr. Schultz, do you want to have any comments tonight in regards to your letter that you have dated for this?
No, it's the standard things that we did with the Knox box address, the fire hydrants in the front end and everything, and they have addressed that and all the drawings and everything. So, it's been covered, so we're good.
Okay, so those are the items you have in your data?
Yes.
All right.
I have an attorney.
Where is our attorney this evening? Oh, she's hiding on me. Would you like to comment on your letter that you have?
I don't have too many comments. I do have some administrative deficiencies, which I think can be pretty quickly corrected. The only thing is, any approval needs to be conditioned on division approval by the township for their land division. They do need to purchase that parcel from us. And then, as the engineer noted, approval of the combination as well.
Does everybody have in their head what was just said? Are there any questions from the PC members at this time for Mr. Butler?
I do have...
Mr. Chair?
Okay, who's going to go first?
Mr. Nold will go first.
Okay, Mr. Nold.
Can you explain the fence, the barrier on one piece of property, and then the four-foot fence on the other piece of property?
Well, the one barrier that's on the northerly side of the property.
Right.
That's, there's a residential zoning property there. So, we have a six-foot concrete precast fence that's going to be along there, screen wall. And then, the parcel to the south is not residential, so we're putting a fence along there. The township will remain and keep that piece of property.
Okay. I would like to suggest that we put a barrier, the total footage of the property to be, so that's both sections of property.
So, we have...
In layman's terms, the chain-link fence goes away, and we put a barrier through there.
A screen wall?
Just like you have up on the northern part.
I'm not seeing why would that be something that would need to be done? Isn't that something that's required to show to the ordinance?
I'm sorry?
It's something that's not required for the ordinance.
I understand that, but I think it'd add consistency to the back of the property there.
Mr. Butler, let me ask a question real quick. Sorry, Mr. Nold.
No problem.
Where are my... Can you see my arrow right here?
Yes.
I think what you're saying is this line starting right here, in conjunction with this, is where this is commercial here.
Yeah, that's all still zoned.
This is the residential right here.
Correct.
This property. So, where it starts, it starts up here, comes down like this, and jogs over to here, right?
Yeah.
This is residential.
Till it goes to the end of the property that we're acquiring, from the township, right there where your cursor is.
Right there, and it go...
Then it turns to a fence, a chain-link fence.
And it, does it stop right here?
It goes all the way to the southerly property line.
So, it goes all the way down?
Yeah.
What type of chain-link fence, if I can... Sorry, I'm jumping.
Probably a cyclone.
It was a similar question I had, so...
Yeah, it's a chain-link fence.
Six foot?
Four foot.
Four foot.
Just to provide a line of demarcation.
Is this the township piece right here?
Yeah.
Pete, do you know what's going to happen to that?
That's going to be our training center back in there.
So, they would come off of your piece?
Yes.
From where you're located now, and your training center would then be to the north of where your existing building is?
Correct. It would be to the right of where your cursor is.
Yeah. I kind of get it, like, over this way.
Actually, almost where Lincoln Street dead ends to the property.
Oh, way up, where it goes way up. I don't have that on this map right now.
Yeah, right where you have the bottom of that text box.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure I got it in my head. So, that's really a C, that's a C classification, probably where you guys are, too. One is C1 and one is C2. So, their property line is right here.
You're looking the second page of...
Yeah.
Their report.
Oh, if I went backwards. Yeah, okay.
This is the area where we would put a chain link. This is all screened.
That chain link's uncoated, just a traditional chain link?
That's what's proposed, yes.
All right. Are there any other PC members at this time that have comments for Mr. Butler? Or Mr. Turner?
Mr. Chairman, along the south side, if you go down just a little...
Right down here?
Yep. That piece there, doesn't that butt up against residential?
No.
Isn't there a house there?
No, this right here is a...
It's a business.
Is a business.
Yeah, that's a business.
It's a tanning salon.
It's not a home.
It looks like a house.
That's the line of town, that's the village.
Well, that's what it is. I mean, there are several... I drove down through there today, and there are several homes that look, that are businesses now, but look like houses. Right. Because they're not homes, but they're businesses that look like residential homes.
Homes that were converted to businesses.
I don't really know, because I think that's village property.
It's a tanning salon in there, I believe.
A tanning salon. Hasn't it been there quite a while?
Yeah. Just looking at like the overhead, you know, just looking at the overhead, you know, satellite version of this, is if we're kind of juts off, kind of goes behind that house on Helena, or Helen Street.
That's way up here.
Yep, so...
Right there?
Right there. And so, as it comes down a little bit, it would head towards the south, a little bit right there. You can still see residential from the back, back that way to about, maybe the end of the parking lot. So, if you keep going south a little bit more, keep going south, right about to the end of the parking lot.
Oh, the parking lot's here.
Yeah.
Well, they got some tree structure in here. So, you're saying maybe to avoid anything that could be visible to these people here, they could maybe do a little more green belt? A little more screening, or maybe take something from one place, move it over to here, whatever's required per their size of their properties? I mean, if you had a natural green buffer here, that would work for a screen. We had a natural green buffer at Culver's, and then they came and cut it all down. And we allowed that to happen. So, I guess I'm going to leave it up to you guys at this time, what would be acceptable, or maybe unacceptable, if there's a comment you want to make to Mr. Butler.
Mr. Chair, I do have additional question.
Go ahead.
Relative to the precast.
Yeah.
Has any discussions happened with the residents in that area? Do they want...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I was just wondering, do they want a precast, or did they want something different there?
We've had no conversations.
Okay, thank you.
What's anyone's comment at this time for this area right here? I guess what he's saying is they park here and park here, and there's possible visibility through here. Because right here's the dumpster location, and that has a wall all the way around it. So, that, you know, this kind of screens this whole corner off. If there was a little more screening in here, I think with some veg, you know, with something of natural green, I think that would probably help provide enough for the residents. My opinion. Anybody else?
I would agree with that.
I would tend to agree with that, too. I guess I do have an additional question. Since that's a four-foot fence, would you be open to making it a six-foot for continuity through there?
Yeah, come on up and talk.
Well, it's not even a money thing. Greg Etuma, the developer, it's not a money thing for me. It's a matter of, like, wanting... I'm anti-fences generally, in my house, my businesses, anywhere, just because I like the green and the natural. I'm against the wall, but it's what you guys want. I'd much rather see greenery in there than anything else, just to give it a natural flowing look. Again, I'm going to do whatever you guys want me to do. I just, I would much prefer green and, you know, seeing, you know, their property and just seeing, you know, just kind of seeing a field than putting up any type of barrier, period. Especially, the whole idea, what we're doing here is, you're kind of wondering about the residential, is we're doing kind of a residential look that is commercial, again, trying to have that, you know, kind of homely feel. And then to put up really any type of barrier, I think, kind of turns it into like, almost like a jail. I mean, I don't want to...
Why ask that question at the last meeting, why you just couldn't put up shrubs, hedges?
It's one of the reasons I asked about the residents, what do they want. I'm not sure they want...
I think the wall was the Planning Commission. I mean, I'd much rather...
I got one question I want to ask Mr. Schultz. If you guys, and you may be gone by then, were to develop this property that you're talking about for a training center, you would have to have a green area and some landscaping to go along with your piece adjacent to the residential properties in the rear of the homes on Helen Street. So, you would create some buffering there, too. Because your property, your property's right here, right?
That keep going up where that text box is, right there, that's the property line right there.
But then, if you guys...
Runs all the way down to...
But then, if you guys did a little buffering through here, too, when you guys put your training center over this way more...
We currently have, when Dan's excavating, use that as their storage yard.
Yeah, they were using it for loading, unloading.
Anyhow, as part of the agreement with them, I had them create a berm starting right up at that corner.
Oh, right here?
Give it 50 feet, and runs all the way to the far easterly property line, and it runs down...
Oh, this way?
Yeah, it runs all the way down to the fang. So, it's probably about an eight-to, eight-to-nine-to-10-foot berm that runs the entire length of the property.
Right now?
Yes.
So, you're saying if you're in this backyard, the berm starts here?
That one lot alone right there, the berm starts right, probably in the middle of their lot is where the berm starts.
Oh, right here?
Right now, there's a whole lot of tall scrub box elder trees and stuff that's right there in the area that's growing up. But once you get just to the right of your arrow there, the rest of it is that berm that runs the entire length of the property.
It goes like this way, right? Like, starts about maybe here?
Yep.
So, we only have a small gap here. If we had a couple more green...
Yes.
Applications in here, I think we're covering it.
Yes.
I didn't think about it until just this evening, but I would accept a few plantings in here of something that would make a, something that stays green year-round, like, not a deciduous-type tree or something. But if we, do you have, are these all deciduous out here?
Those are deciduous trees, yes.
Okay. These are not, these are...
Those are non-deciduous. And the ones that are up the top of the corner.
That we're talking about.
So, if we could, you know, not make you buy more than necessary based on what you have on your plan currently, because you've got a lot over here right now.
I think that's the screen, the wall.
Yeah, that's for showing to the ordinance.
Yeah.
I just...
But if we could borrow a couple, the only other ones you really have are these right here, right? Or could we put a couple more in here that you guys could find somehow?
They could be relocated there.
Sure, or we could add. Again, to me, it's not...
I like the word add.
Yeah.
We can always accept more.
To me, I...
You can't accept less.
Yeah, we can, I can add. It's not, again, certainly I'm in development, right, and I'm here to make money, right? Don't get me wrong. But I'd much rather, I really want to be a development I'm proud of.
Yes, sir.
And have something that is good for the community than, you know, to try to save a couple bucks.
Honestly, we want the same thing, too.
I know you do. I know you do. And so, I have no problem adding trees there. If there's any discussion that can be had with a natural barrier as opposed to that wall...
Let's see this man want to speak.
Well, I enquired about that when this came up before. I'm not a big fan of chain-link fences, but if you're going to, you know, put a screen in front of them, that's fine.
Well, it helps both people, I think.
Right. But why can't you just put a natural hedge there instead of the fence itself?
I'm not asking them what to put there yet. I'm just asking them if they'll agree to put something.
Well, I think you guys did ask for the fence.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, the other fence. That's right, we did.
Yeah.
Fence in general.
That was in the preliminary.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would gladly line it with, and generally, we can do a hedge, or I like to do like, non, like, arborvitae things. It doesn't look intentional, or it looks more natural.
Yeah.
That's just Greg personally, but I would much rather spend money on natural, organic stuff than anything wall or fence. Much rather. And I think it adds to the community in that regard.
I totally agree with you.
It'd be softer that way, too.
Yeah.
Any comments anybody else have that they're concerned about, then, for this site?
So, where would you put that? You're doing the whole length, or you're doing it just where the chain-link fence is?
I think with the berm that Mr. Schultz was talking about starts about right here.
Oh, yeah.
And he said it was how high? Close to eight feet?
Yeah. But the wall, the wall in general goes all the way from Helen Street, basically, all the way down to the other property.
All right, down to here?
Yeah, after it turns the corner. So, are you looking to just replace the chain link?
This is not residential here.
I know. But fence in general, where would you allow them just to put a natural barrier versus a fence?
I would allow, I wouldn't care if they kept that right there now, that fence, and put a few more plantings right in here, and it would solve everything from these people to see in here, because there's the corner of the parking lot.
But that fence goes all the way to the southern part.
Well, let it stay there, then.
It's not there right now.
You mean, it stops right here?
No, there's not one there.
There's not a fence.
Oh, it's not there?
Stops right at that line.
I think shrub looks better than a fence.
Oh, down a little bit. Okay, like, about right here.
Lower. Lower, right there, right there. That's where it stops, that's where it stops from.
What's everybody's pleasure? Mr. Knoll?
So we could, we could essentially take out the four-foot chain link fence and have them add...
Natural barrier.
Natural barrier in it?
Okay.
If you, if you put it as a condition in the motion.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with it.
Just where their chain link fence is.
Yeah, what about, what about where the wall is, John? Are you gonna leave that there?
The wall stops right here. Correct?
Yes.
Leave the wall, leave the wall there and let it stop at that point of intersection.
Okay.
Do you, do you want to keep the wall? Or do we want to press this? I turned into a Lorax a male day, so...
Personally, I'd like to, the reason why I asked the question about the residents, cause I really would like their input on that wall. Cause some may like it, some may not like it.
I was just gonna ask that.
Whether the parking lot is there and all those parking spaces, I'm sure there's concern with lights going through there. Maybe that's why the wall is there, but...
You guys said it was a stone barrier.
It's always been there, prior when Thompson's there, had a, had a wall there, wasn't a stone wall, but...
No, it was a wooden fence. It was a wooden, it was a wooden... I, I think, you know, and don't take this wrong...
To me, it's up to the residents, cause they're gonna have to deal with the people going in and out.
For a while and it could be gone later in life. I think this part is somewhat important here. And not so important through here. So if they do a natural buffer here, I'm good with that. But I think this possibly should, and it goes all the way up to here. They've green, they've got all their stuff here, so they don't have to look at it. But headlamps or anybody or whatever's going this way with people driving in and out of here, then they can't, they can't obstruct anything here with these people. If you wanted comments from those people, they, I hate to admit, they should have been here.
Don't destroy.
But, I mean, it was just, everybody knows what's going on for this meeting tonight. It's all public information. I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this wall. And I'm okay, once you get down here, with this going into natural green space. Right to there. Chief, go ahead.
Not to muddy the waters or anything, originally from where the fence dead ends right there, it was my request to put the fence back up, cause the fence is laying on the ground right now.
Oh, it is?
Put the fence back up from there down to the corner, cause what we get is a lot of foot traffic right now of people all cutting up from Loak Street and down that way, cut up through the property and cut through there, then they head up the side of the road up towards Myers or up towards McDonald's or doing whatever.
People are traveling, walking through there?
Yes. So that was my request, was the fence is there, Dan's took it down to do the work and I was just saying, put the fence back up.
Oh, so there was always a fence there?
Correct.
It got removed?
Correct.
And now you'd like it put back up?
Cyclone fence, four-foot fence. From the, the corner of the property line down to where it shows right where your cursor sits right now, exactly.
Yeah, I got it.
Is existing right now is a four-foot fence. And from that point on, they took it down because that was the whole project when Dan's was going through there doing their, their stuff, so...
The shrubs won't keep people out?
No.
You gotta walk through the shrubs?
Yeah, it'd have to be tight shrubs if you're gonna do that way. So...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, there's a hedge, you know, they could, but...
Depending on what you put up there, the deer are gonna eat them all up anyhow.
Is the cyclone fence completely gone from the backyard of this piece here?
No, from that, again, right there, we're right there.
It goes right to there.
It, that stops right there is where they took it apart. And actually right there, almost within probably five to 10 feet is a great, be huge Edison pole sits right there in that area, so...
Well, let me ask something crazy and I'm gonna ask you. If, if this is here now, and then we put, build a green belt buffer through here, and people try to come through here, if we have this wall completely blocked where they can't get through here, they'd have to go through someone's yard otherwise, or they'd have to at least go to here, and you're saying they would probably come into this property?
Right now, it's all wide open, right through that area.
Walk through here?
Correct. Yeah, there's nothing there today. So you're only talking about...
But there's nothing there right now.
Eighty, about ninety feet of fence is all it is, is what you're putting back up. The south property line between us and, and the tanning salon, the fence is already up all the way across there anyhow.
All right.
And that's like a big foot fence there.
Oh, that's even further south then?
Yes.
Oh.
Right where your cursor sits.
I, I got it. It goes all the way down to the bottom.
Right there, that point, right there. The fence is already exists across going to the...
You're saying this is about sixty feet?
Maybe eighty feet probably.
Eighty?
Yep.
What did it look like when it was up?
Good fence?
Oh, it was. It wasn't falling apart?
Yeah, cause it used to be a hindrance when we used to walk over to McDonald's when it was there. We had to climb the fence to get to McDonald's, so, yeah.
Do you have ladders?
All right, I get the whole scenario.
Mr. Chair, I've got to ask some questions if we're gonna develop this.
All right.
From your corner, were that existing four-foot chain link fences, how many feet from there down to there should we specify? If we want, want to make a motion in regards to keeping that four-foot fence?
I guess if the chief wants it to go all the way to here, you'd have to...
It's either all or nothing.
It's all or nothing, otherwise you'd have to specify the entire eastern portion of property that backs up to the C, uh, C1 or C2 district.
So I, I missed something. You're in favor of the four-foot fence running the entire length?
Yes. That was my request in the beginning on the original site plan.
All right, I think I heard that.
Well, yeah, that kind of addresses that, yes. I haven't learned a lot in my development years, but generally you don't go against the chief, so...
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking in my brain right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll just, I'll take a seat. And we're still gonna put up greenery.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the comment.
Yeah.
But, but John, you're gonna have to specify, or you're gonna have to specify something.
Well, he's got it in the plan with, uh, the fence, so he's just putting shrubs up, right?
Yeah. Some additional shrubbery.
I have a, excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have a technical question. If we call that out as the south piece, where's the property line for the south piece?
Well, this is their south border here.
The northern border. Is it up in that corner where that?
Me here?
No, that's the whole piece of property, the bottom south part.
What does he mean by that?
There's two pieces of property that make up that lot.
Oh, where the line is?
Where's the property line? I need a bench.
There's a property line.
Is that right there?
That's it. That's where the ma- masonry wall would stop in the cyclone fence.
So if I were, if I were to specif- specify that a four-foot fence needs along, to, to along the backside of the south lot, what does that do?
I think what you need to, I think what you need to specify is to extend the existing, from the existing cyclone fence which goes right to here.
It's already in the plan.
It's already in the plan.
And it goes all the way down in the plan.
It's already there.
So it's already in the plan, so I don't think you have to include that. You just have to include the plantings.
You just have to put the plan in.
Mr. Butler, are you okay with that?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're currently extending that fence anyways, all the way to the south of the property.
Okay.
And, you know, the trees along the, those four deciduous, non-deciduous trees that we have, those can be relocated. Those, those four, Mr. Berger would stop moving. Scroll, scroll up, Mr. Berger, for me, so kind of, so I want to say, those four evergreen trees that are there. Those are there to meet the code, meet the requirements. They don't necessarily need just to be there.
Okay.
They could be along that, that's easterly.
So our working relationship, I don't need to say anything about a condition on this site plan.
Oh, the greenery?
Nope.
Okay.
We're good with the greenery.
C three point zero calls out a four-foot chain link fence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's already in the plan.
We're done? If we get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
This is for frequency wellness. I move to grant a preliminary and final site approval for PC file number PC 22008, known by the project name 280 North Washington Street, contingent upon the following. Applicant providing all information required by the town, township zoning ordinance. Two applicant's submitted revised plans. Addresses showing deficiencies, reports submitted by the township consultant. Three additional applicant, excuse me, three applicant entering, entering into a development agreement reviewed and approved by the township in accordance with the township zoning ordinance. And four, approval of a land division and sale of the township-owned property to the applicant. All consultants' letters to be attached to the minutes.
Now, we're...
That's it?
That's it.
Well, it is much shorter.
I wanna, I want, I want to make sure I got clarity on one thing here.
You just support for...
For discussion?
Yeah.
I do have support, please.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Knoll and supported by Mr. Spiz for the preliminary and the final site plan, that's what I'm trying to ask.
Sure.
Okay, for both. I think we should call, uh, is there any discussion on the, uh, motion?
This motion, this motion says it to address the consultant's issues, correct? The way he verb...
Yeah.
I'm not concerned about it.
Okay. I think Susan, you better call and roll.
Hunwood?
Yes.
Spiz?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are you gonna put your own information up for, or, excuse me, we're on to, uh, our next case is PC 22007, uh, for Mr. Appicant Jose, and I think he's here and plus his representative.
Yes.
So if you'd like to start off, Mr. Butler, please?
Can I just say thank you to everybody?
Yes, you can.
I'm, I'm excited to do this, this is great. Thank you.
If you can allow me to share the screen? So as you might recall, we were in front of you on July 13th, um, to receive a preliminary site plan and special land use approval. Uh, subject parcel is zoned C2 with a MPD overlay on it. It's about one acre in size, uh, has twenty-seven parking spaces. Just like the other one, does meet all the ordinance requirements dimensionally for setbacks and green belts. One of the changes that was requested from the preliminary site plan to the final site plan was the rotation of the dumpster, uh, sack, wanted to, cause there's a conflict with the internal landscape island. He wanted us to turn it a little bit, so we did do that to address that. Other than that, it's essentially the same plan which you, you saw back in, in July. And if you have any questions, uh, a developer is here, the owner's here, contractor's here, and architect's here.
You know what, I think, uh, we did, we did, we did a kind of a reverse order, but maybe we're gonna bring you up here on this one first, Jim.
Bring me up?
Yeah.
All right. Get my letter up there, Tom?
I'm trying. I'm, I'm slow. You're gonna have to probably give it back to me, just thank you. I think I have it. I, I have my letter on my screen, I just don't...
So for this one, we, uh, some plans were submitted. There were some comments that came back. The applicant, um, turns new plans back in, so we did a quick turnaround on this review letter. I think that some of the comments, they weren't able to address just because unfortunately they received our letter like the day after they submitted revised plans. Okay?
Oh.
So I'll preface it by that. Um, with that being said, again, a lot of these are engineering related items, which, you know, the, the planning commission may or may not choose to have come back before you, but I think that they can all be addressed. Um, again, there's some, some minor discrepancies between some of the legal descriptions that are on there. Um, we, one of our comments was that we wanted documentation about the site itself, that it had been properly cleaned up, um, from when it was a gas station, that the tanks had been removed and so forth. Uh, we did find out that that was properly cleaned up and that there was a restrictive covenant, which Mr. Butler might be able to explain a little bit better, once I get to some of my other comments here. But there was a restrictive covenant that was put on this particular piece of property, okay? But it was cleaned up properly, which was our, you know, our key thing to make sure that there wasn't anything going on there. Any work of that's gonna be in the MDOT right away, that they're gonna need a permit for that. Again, they've submitted a grading plan and we had a few comments, but, uh, that can be addressed during the engineering phase and we find that acceptable for the site plan process here. Um, all of the storm water is gonna be retained on the site. We'll get to some more of that in a second. Sanitary sewer, again, it's just a new six-inch lead with a monitoring manhole standard. Uh, find that acceptable. Uh, water distribution, similar to the previous project, they're gonna have to go to the other side of M24, bore across the road, um, which they do show the bore from the, from their property across the road. However, uh, they need to run a water main in front of their property that is not currently, that is not shown on the current plans. Um, and that was one of our comments. Again, it's a utility comment, so whether you want to see the plans again or not, or you want to leave that up to the administrative review, um, that would be up, up to you guys. But it does, the water system will have the proper capacity, or the adequate capacity to supply the development there. They got some hydrants and valves shown in there. And I'll let the chief talk about some of the circulation things. With regards to the storm water, this was originally proposed to be a, uh, similar type leaching basin system, underground, you know, pipes, stuff goes into the grounds, pretty good soils around there. And I think that because of the restrictive covenant, it has since changed and, um, engineering plans, they can be run continuous along with the site plan, were submitted to our office. And they are now showing that there's going to be an outlet to M24, that the pipes are gonna all come together and go out to M24. Obviously, they need to get a permit for that, but that's currently what's being shown. So what was submitted from an engineering perspective is different than what is being shown on the site plan drawings. Obviously, we like those things to jive, so I don't know what direction it's going to go. And again, it's a utility issue. We'll make sure that all the storm drainage works properly on the, on the site. But whether you want to see that plan again before issuing final, that's completely your purview, you know, up to you guys. So that's really it with the storm sewer. That's a little convoluted right now because of the engineering plans that were submitted. Uh, with regards to the pavements, sidewalks, curbing, again, um, all of the requirements have been met or can be met with a few minor changes to their details. Um, they got the, you know, the dumpster pad and there's a, um, there's an existing safety path that's in front of the property.
You sure?
Uh, yeah, isn't there yet? Yeah, there's existing safety path.
Is there?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it was put in by MDOT. MDOT did it as part of their project.
Oh, it's part of their project?
Yes.
The picture we're seeing on, who goes old?
He has an old, older picture that doesn't show it, so it was confused.
Oh, yeah. No, it's...
So when he asked me, I didn't know for sure either.
Yeah, I believe it ends at their property. I, I don't believe it goes in, cause I, the laundromat and so forth is next to that, so I believe it ran across that property.
Okay, me too.
Yep, yep, so it is there. Um, and then we had a couple minor comments with regards to the landscape plan, just moving some stuff around, So again, there's a few more items that are outstanding on this plan than previous plans that we've proposed, that we've discussed.
Some of your comments are all done in red on here, but Mr. Butler, have you seen any of this yet?
I'm sure yes I have.
Okay.
And I have no issue resolving those with Mr. Sharp.
I'm sorry, did you want to talk?
Yeah, I wanted to ask.
Sorry.
This isn't our area of expertise, but I thought, what's going to happen with the pole in front?
With the pole out front? It's being moved. They showed on their plans that the, all the electrical lines are going to be.
Are they burying them, or are they just going to move the poles?
That's a discussion between with them and DTE. I believe that they're just moving the poles to the rear of the property. I'm not 100% sure.
We're going to reroute it.
Yeah, I think you can see it on that plan right there, that it shows it going to the nor, or I guess that would be the east, and then down along that property line. So you just.
I didn't notice that. Okay.
It'll all be overrun.
Right, so that's our red line mark up there. If you go to the next one, Tom.
Keeps getting redder.
So again, that's the water main that should be shown along the front edge of the property there. It's not currently shown on the plan. So again, it's up to this commission's, you know, direction as to whether or not they want to see this plan come back a little more complete, or whether being utilities and the trust in your consultants that will be able to handle this administratively once they resubmit. I mean, a plan needs to be resubmitted, but we can do it.
Well, let me ask you a question, then, in particular. You're going to be re-reviewing everything that the engineering changes that Mr. Butler makes as it comes back, and you're going to, you're going to give your final approval on engineering.
Correct.
I think it could be put in a motion in that manner.
But you want your site plan, your final site plan, and your engineering drawings to be fairly similar.
I want them similar.
The way that your process works, you do preliminary, final, and then engineering. So your final and your engineering may not match exactly, but they should be pretty close. Whereas, the plan that you have before you doesn't have the water main on it, and we know that there's going to be a revised storm system, so a few more items than we usually like to let go.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
All these have been documented in your letter, except for the storm.
Correct, because the storm sewer is a new item.
The storm sewer will work its way out one way or another. Either they get the approval from the MDOT, they can go into that, the manhole out front, or they don't. If they don't, then they go to, as it is today, correct?
Correct.
So we've covered our bases with everything so far.
I think so, yeah.
I'm good.
I believe that Mr. Butler could probably speak better to the restrictive covenant and the reason for the storm sewer. Again, we just saw it briefly when we opened the plans up for the engineering. We haven't finished our review of that plan yet.
In your eyes, and not Mr. Butler's yet, is it probably because it was an older gas station site, and releasing this into the soil for the stormwater management?
For the stormwater management?
Because you said it was going to typically be underground.
Again, I'll, can I defer to Mr. Butler?
Yeah, maybe you better do it now.
He can speak better to that as a design engineer.
I wasn't going to get him up yet, but we'll do it now.
Way this drainage currently works on the site, it's kind of split in half, north and south. The north half, the parking lot, all drains into an underground storm sewer system that's connected to the storm sewer in LaPire Road. South half, discharge, the south parking lot has a structure as well, storm sewer structure, and it discharges towards the southeast corner of the site. It goes offsite. So what we're proposing to do with this storm sewer, previously we were doing leaching basins and doing just infiltration.
Yeah.
Here, we're going to put enlarged pipe. We're going to collect the water, store the water, and then discharge the water back into the MDOT right of way. We're not going to have any infiltration.
Oh, at a rate, then?
Yeah, it'll be at the rate that MDOT allows us to do it.
Yeah, so it's their rate that they'll allow you to discharge it back to.
And the good news, at least from a design perspective, is that MDOT will allow us, what we have currently going into there, I can't add any more from a volumetric standpoint. I get the flow rate.
So you're going to create an underground detention basin? That's basically what you're doing. And that's what I wondered if it can be done then, right?
Yeah.
I believe it can, yes.
Okay, that's my comment. I'm trying to, I was putting you up first, but now he just kind of answered it, so, does everybody get what he's talking about right now?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody, okay. I get it, I understand, and I've seen plenty of them happen. I just wondered if there was a reason why we weren't doing it for the whole thing. Okay, now, I guess, I do want to, does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Sharp? We have a few letters that we have to kind of go into here. We can either go into, we can go into the Kelly Firm letter dated October 4th, which is kind of putting us back in a different order here, so let me see if I can get us to that, and then, and then we'll kind of work our way down to Mr. Michelle. I think that started on 84 here. Oh, come on, get in here. Okay, here's the, now, we have the Kelly Firm letter that we had dated October 4th, and she had comments and concerns with a couple things in her letter that she provided. And one of them is because she mentioned persons having a legal interest in the property when you read, if you read the letter, I read the whole letter, in regards to where she comes back with her concerns. Now, Kelly, I don't know, would you like to get up and speak in regards to this letter, please?
Basically, there's.
You're not Kelly, I'm.
That's okay. You know, I'll answer, I knew who you were talking to.
I made a mistake, I made a mistake, so. Brittany, would you like to speak to this?
I forgive you, I forgive you.
First time I saw you was this evening.
So, there are some administrative issues. They do need to send us proof of ownership, which is a valid lease or deed. They also need to send proof that all property taxes and special assessments have been paid. My other comments had to do with Section 5.35 of the zoning ordinance, which is the overlay. So maybe they can address this tonight, but we need to know their number of employees, total on the largest shift, and then hours of operation of the facility. The other two items come under final site plan approval requirements, which is their location of storage or disposal for hazardous materials, or a statement that none will be present at the site, and then they need to include a table of required permits and the issuing authority.
Everybody get that? Thank you. Now, we can either go into, I think we probably should go into Zach's summary letter, and I'm going to try to find it here real quick. I think if I have it correct, give me a second. Where'd that get me?
You just stumbled a little bit up there.
I'm trying to figure out where I went.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm in the site plan review criteria, so I'm in it. It's not at the right beginning. Now, according to Zach, he had quite a few comments in regards to this. I wish, in a way, we had him this evening, but we can work without him. Where's his list where he does?
At the end.
Hang on, I'm trying to get to it.
Page 11?
I'm working that way, I'm just. It's usually in his criteria letter when he starts talking about, "The final site plan is being reviewed using the new site plan article." So. Okay, here's his summary. I'll try to go through it a little slower, just in case people have comments. "The final site plan appears to be generally complete, except as otherwise noted in this report. The planning commission could grant approval, whether or without conditions, if it determines decision criteria and developmental standards are met or would be met with conditions. The planning commission could postpone, I don't know, if it determines missing information is necessary for its review, or there are significant or too many changes or conditions that would be necessary to grant approval at this time. If this is the case, it should direct the applicant to prepare revisions based on its review and provide guidance as to the additional information or changes would be necessary. The planning commission could then deny approval if it determines decision criteria and developmental standards are not met or could not easily be met with changes or conditions." Now, my next comment on that, when I read to that point, is from what I heard Mr. Sharp say earlier, that's why we kind of, I kind of threw him in front of the bus, is that he feels all the things that he has concerns with could probably be taken care of through the engineering components of the site from the letter that you produced. So that's probably what Mr. Michelle's was talking about, if they can be, if it determines decision criteria and developmental standards are not met, or could not easily be met, but it sounds like they could be met, in my opinion, from what I heard from Mr. Sharp, our township engineer. So you have a couple determinations to make this evening as to how you want to handle moving forward with this, with everything we heard in front of us. Now, we also heard from the letter of the attorney, and Brittany got up and spoke in regards to that. And I'm sure, and Mr. Schultz, I haven't left you out of the picture yet, I do have you in here. I read your letter with September 25th, but you're good with everything so far to date.
I just want to talk about fence, we can throw that in there, but.
We're not going to do that, we're not going to do that on this site. I had some mistakes I made earlier and had some wrong documentation up on the screen. So I guess I'd like to hear from the planning commission members on how they think they want to travel down the road with this.
Is that paying down a little bit more, are those potential conditions?
Sure, okey-dokey. There they are. And then that's Mr. Michelle's signature right there.
The chief's, you're all set with circulation, no issues?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Nolan.
I'm very comfortable with Mr. Sharp's letter and his recommendation that this can move forward. They have to get approvals from the different municipals, including MDOT. If they don't get the approval, they back up and have to go the other route.
Well, it says, it says in the potential conditions, I guess if you wanted to write a motion that said, in pertaining to the potential, potential conditions of Mr. Michelle's letter from Carlisle Warpin dated such and such, and it was dated September 30th, if those, all those conditions could be met, including, was stormwater in there?
Yes.
Yeah, stormwater's in there, so with those potential conditions, if they can all be met, and you want to put a motion, include that in the motion, I think we could work in that direction.
I have a motion prepared.
Okay.
The motion is all-inclusive of all the consultants.
All the letters?
Of all the letters.
Okay, put it together then.
I just might add that before I get on, Brittany's been very helpful in this, in trying to tone down our motions, so they're not three or four pages long. So without further ado, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, Mr. Nolan.
I move to grant final site plan approval for the PC file number 22-007, known by the project name 1225 South LaPire Road Marijuana Provisioning Center. The condition upon the filing, the applicant provides all the information required by the zoning, township zoning ordinance. Two, the applicant's submittal of revised plans addressing stated deficiencies, reports submitted by the township consultants. And three, the applicant enters into a developmental agreement reviewed and approved by the township in accordance with the township zoning ordinance. All consultants' letters to be attached to the minutes.
Do I have support for the motion?
I'll support.
Oh, we have Mr. Hunwig next, aren't we? I think he beat you, bud.
He did.
Well, he can do it if he wants.
I have a motion by Mr. Nolan for site plan approval for the PC 22007, and supported by Mr. Hunwig. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Fence?
No, forget that. We're not talking fences right now. So, seeing none, I'm going to have Susan call a row.
Spitz?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Hunwig?
Yes.
Burger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. Say, I think you got a little work cut out for you.
A little bit more, Rick.
Okay, thank you for your time.
No fences on this.
Oh, there's big fences on the back.
So you don't fall off. So you don't, so you don't fall off. That's a guard rail. All right, actually, we are, next on the agenda, we have communications and/or committee reports. I don't think economic development committee's done. Have they done anything?
No, we haven't met.
That's what you said last time.
It is what I said last time.
I was not present at the last ordinance review committee. I know Mr. Turner was there, and I know Mr. Nolan was there, and Mr. Hunwig, I think you were there too, right?
Yeah, I was there.
Would someone like to represent comments in that last meeting? From the ordinance review committee? Were there, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chair, I'll take a stab at it. The commercial PUD is going toward, to legal, and.
Through the new group?
To the new group. We're, all applications, excuse me, all work is going through the Ellis Firm PLC. Brittany Ellis is our, excuse me, the Kelly Firm.
See, now, it's getting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's the Kelly Firm, represented by Brittany Ellis, and she is going to be looking at the PUD for, as, from our legal standpoint.
So it's gotten all the way to where it's going to legal now?
Yes.
And then it'll come from legal with comments or concerns?
Correct.
And then we critique it if we have to?
Yes.
And then the next would be to the planning commission?
If it gets approved through the ORC, it can move forward.
Yeah, well, that would be great. That's what we've been trying to work towards. One less item on the list, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Do we have any more comments from Mr. Sharp? He's here tonight.
I do.
All right, you're a pretty talkative guy.
I'd like to give you guys updates on things.
I know.
Manitou Hills, infrastructure's going in the ground right now?
I wondered about that the other day.
Yep.
So they finally got moving.
Finally got moving. Finally got a contractor on board, and, yep, they put all, they got all their infrastructure in.
What are they starting with first? What's the deepest cuts in there? Sanitary?
Sanitary, yeah, sanitary always goes in first. Well, usually, it's the deepest one, so.
Okay.
Sanitary's in, water main was completed today, so they got a little bit of storm work to do, storm sewer work, and then we have testing to do on the water mains and things, just to make sure that they're sufficient.
Yeah.
But they plan on paving that probably within the next two weeks, so.
We might get some home sites in there.
They might, they might. So that's Manitou, Sanctuary Hills, that's the, I can't remember, like 85 unit development, on Drainer Road on the south side. It's my understanding that Clearview Homes closed on that property, so it's pretty likely that they're going to be coming through with some plans in the near future.
Well, they just submitted the application to demo five buildings.
Baby steps.
I just saw them like two days ago.
Yep, yep. So, yep, they're starting, starting to do some work out there. I think it's a little bit of time, but they've got their approval from the road commission, so I think they're going to be coming through pretty quickly.
Do they have to do a lot of earth balancing on that property?
Trying to keep it as natural as possible.
Oh, rolling, a little bit?
There's still going to be a decent amount of grading to occur on there, but they're going to try to keep it as natural as possible.
All right, because it is undulating a little bit. I drove through there today and looked at it. Yeah, okay.
And then, lastly, with regards to the process of the site plan and so forth here, you know, the way I'm understanding, you know, after you guys give your conditional approval for final, like you did on two projects tonight, that the applicant is required to make those revisions, and then bring that back into the township with the plan, you know, a correct plan that addresses all those, and then the consultants internally look at those, those new documents to make sure that everything has been addressed. And at that point, myself and Zach and the chief, we all kind of put our signatures on the plans. That way, there's a final site plan.
Approved.
Is approved, that we can look back on, as probably all of you know, and I'm sure Mr. Berger, maybe more than the rest, some of these site plans in the township don't exist anymore. Like, we look for a site plan for Meyer. Don't know, where is it? So that's why the process, and Zach's doing a very good job with that, to make sure that we have a final plan that goes into the file, that 10 years from now, 15 years from now, people can pull out, because it's very difficult.
Mr. London is also concerned about that.
When you say file, is that a paper file in a drawer, or is it electronic file on a server somewhere?
Yeah.
Hope it's more of the latter than previous.
Susan's allowed to answer that.
There are paper files, but I'm hoping that things are getting scanned and getting put into the system and whatever BSNA or whatever.
It's paper until the scanner guy, that's what we call him.
Scanner guy?
He comes in maybe four times a year, and everything that we have that has not yet been scanned, he scans.
Okay.
So when he scans it, does it automatically go into the proper place in the filing system in the computer?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not him to make that decision?
No, it's Curtis, so if you're looking for something in particular, you would go to Curtis. He is the master file.
With the scanning guy, he doesn't, all he does is scan it, and it automatically goes, or goes to Curtis?
It onto an external hard drive that he has, then he puts it onto our system, from his, the external hard drive. Some things, if he has a huge volume of stuff to do, he comes and sets up all his equipment at the office and scans things at the office. Other things, if they're just maybe a couple banker's boxes, he'll take them and scan them at his own office, and then bring back the paper, which we then.
But there's no concern that whatever gets scanned is improperly filed in a wrong folder?
Well, I mean, you can search by keyword, by.
I suppose, yeah.
Address, by developer.
Right, right, yeah.
It's probably something you should take up Curtis, but.
There's obviously different queries you can go into to do that, so that's.
Right, but is there, I guess I'm thinking farther ahead of that, and maybe I could talk to Curtis about it, but instead of having the scanner guy, there's ways today, he can submit everything electronically. You don't need to have a scanner guy do it.
A lot of communities don't ever have paper plans. I mean, maybe just one that has to.
Yeah, we're doing so much more electronically, even when, you know, Cheryl is providing us with the site plan documents. We always require a PDF now, and.
But you could even go.
I think the township is moving towards a less paper comment, because Mr. London is now doing a lot of stuff that we just file directly right into the computer, you know, from documents that we need even for construction documents. If it's engineering trust drawings, or if it's letters from engineers and soil boring responses and all these different comments, we e-file all that stuff now. So it goes directly in through BSNA and goes into the program, it's on the hard drive, it goes for that particular Sidwell, and the same thing can happen with electronic documents through engineering and through planning.
But I didn't mean to muddy the waters, you know, on this, on this last one, but the fact that they're not showing any of the water main pipe that's supposed to be on the plan, and the fact that they're not, that their storm sewer is being completely revised from what you're seeing on the plan, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable. what you're seeing on the plan, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable.
But we made him make a comment. We got him back up to the podium, and he made the comments, he says the one half is actually going into the storm system, the other half is going to be detained, it's going to be detained underground before it releases back out at a rate that's acceptable. So, and that's what's going to be reviewed by your group to make sure that's all happened.
Absolutely.
So I didn't have a problem with that after we got his comments to say what they're going to do with that stormwater. I just wanted to make sure we knew what he was going to do with it, and everybody felt like they, he got the.
And that's correct, and I know that generally, this body is more concerned with the layout of things, you know, and things can be engineered, right? You can put in pumps, you can do a lot of different stuff.
You can fix anything.
You know.
Not anything, not everything.
Especially if you got Greg's money. Money's not an issue for him.
Well, okay, now you're in the money.
But anyway, you know, I just wanted to make that clear, that I wasn't trying to muddy the water there, but there are a lot of infrastructure items that we generally see on the plans that were not there, and that's why I left it to your discretion as to whether or not you wanted to approve it.
Okay.
It can certainly be addressed. I'm not worried about that, but I just want to make sure you are comfortable approving that plan.
Not to add to or take away from what you're saying, is that we're very conscious the amount of work that we push on to our consultants. So here at the PC, we try to make motions that are encompassing the project, but yet helping the business come into our town. But those pre-app meetings that we have, and all the preliminary meetings we try to have within the township makes this job easier. We don't like to push it to the end. We're, all the consultants are trying to scramble to get the final site plan finalized so we can do work in the field.
Yeah, we, you know, a lot of times, like tonight, Mr. Butler showed a plan on the screen. Normally, after the submittal period, we don't accept any additional plans, you know? You don't like people throwing things at your consultants the night of the meeting. You don't have time to review it, we don't have time to review it. That was a pretty minor issue, and I'm comfortable with it, but we just like to have things as complete as possible when we come to you guys. All right, thanks.